K L T V sound check, K L T V sound check.
K L T V sound check.
Morning, welcome to the Tuesday meeting in the B O C C. Wow, I'm gonna have to spruce things up, I'm getting boring around here, getting many people. You want to join me, we'll do this flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I wore a long sleeve dress shirt and everything today. Yeah, what the heck? Uh, today it's Commissioner Mortensen and myself, Commissioner Weber is in the building, but he's on a, on another meeting. So, Mr. Mortensen, I'll ask for a review of the minutes.
This is where I can be cantankerous and say no.
You can.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the minutes of the activities last week.
We have a motion to approve, any questions, corrections? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I'll run down the consent agenda. Under call for bids, we have a call for bids for 2024 Joint Agency Pavement Striping Project to install paint lines, scheduled for June 12th, 2024 at 1:30. Agreements, contracts, awards, agreement with city climate to support the operation, cost of tuition, tourism promotion from the lodging tax fund, total amount is 30,000. We had, uh, the lodging tax fund, LTAC, they had some funds in that, and so they, they sent out a 30,000 distribution to every city, I believe is how it was explained yesterday. So, uh, Klammer, you'll see as the contracts come in, you'll see Castle Rock and Longview Castle, et cetera. Bid award to Compass Construction Northwest LLC for the Klammer River Road Culvert project. Uh, their bid was 105,300. Contract with active construction for the Eric Creek Fish Passage project, uh, for clearing and grubbing, shoring, whole, whole works. Uh, total cost on that is 1,913,913. Under resolutions, resolution for the North Fork Goble Creek Fish Passage Design Project, county road project number 812 to remove a deteriorating undersized box culvert, there's a barrier to fish passage. Uh, total cost is estimated to be at 500,000 with 85% of the funding coming from the Brian Abbott Fish Barrier Removal Board. Correspondents, uh, we appointed Kirsten Markstrom to the board through the Park and Recreation Advisory Board, six-year term that expires December 31st, 2030. Um, letter from the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission regarding authorization for revised DPP. DPP is a Drilling Program Plan. And then a, a letter, certificate and resolution from Jane Wall, Executive Director from the Washington State County Road Administrative, Administration Board regarding certificate of good practice that was sent to our county engineer. And then vouchers, an amount of 1,434,228.64 cents. Any questions on consent?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as you have presented.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Last chance for questions, comments? Don't see any hands.
You got a hand up.
We do? Who is it?
Uh, let's see. Susan Eugenis.
Did you want to?
Can you promote Susan?
Okay.
There she is.
I had no comments on the consent, I just wanted to be moved over for the, uh, motion items, apologies.
Hey, thanks.
I take it you're not going to be here then, in person?
Uh, no, I, I, I can't, they, they didn't beam, I haven't invented the beam me up or being in two places at one time yet, so I'm work on that.
You're an engineer, you gotta get that figured out.
I am working on it.
Okay, seeing no others, call for a vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, now you're on with the motion items, Public Works.
So, good morning, everyone, Susan Eugenis, County Engineer. Um, the motion item we have in front of you today is a local agency agreement and federal aid project prospectus for the Owl Creek Bridge Replacement Project. So this, uh, bridge is on Old Highway 99, uh, just south of the city of Kelso Limits, so just prior to reaching Rose Valley Road. The original bridge was, um, half the size it is now, it was installed as part of the original highway, so it's a 1923, a vintage bridge, uh, we have been awarded bridge replacement funding through STPG. Uh, we are requesting at this time, we enter into the agreement with WashDOT that will allow us to access a million dollars for design of the money, the project is 100% reimbursable through the state.
Okay. She mentioned yesterday that this looks like probably when we get to construction, you're about a $6 million project for this bridge, yeah?
Yes.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the prospectus and local agency agreement for the Owl Creek Bridge Replacement as has been presented.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor to approve. Last chance for questions. Seeing none, we'll call for a vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thanks Susan.
Thank you.
Uh, before I open it up, uh, next Monday, there's no meetings, it's Memorial Day, we'll be closed, so that's the 27th. On Wednesday, next Wednesday, not this Wednesday, but next Wednesday, uh, Department of Ecology will be in at 2:30 for, uh, meeting. June 5th.
Excuse me, on that, uh, meeting with Ecology, is there a particular topic, or is that just getting acquainted with the new people?
To my knowledge, it's just getting acquainted, it's a new person down in Vancouver that's doing it, and they wanted, his goal, when I talked to him out at, when I went out to LT1 and, and looked it over with Ecology, he would like to meet with us on a quarterly basis, so I think it's just to keep up, up to date and keep in contact. He didn't express any specific goal for the meeting.
Got it, thank you.
Uh, the Wednesday after that, we have a budget amendment review. And then late in June, on the 26th, Lower Columbia Fish Recovery Board, uh, Robert Sudar will be in, so. That's a little bit of the upcoming events. With that, we'll open it up to public comment. It's gonna be a quick day, isn't it?
Let's, let's talk a little bit in case there's some stragglers that wish to come. What, what's the status now of, uh, their LT1 work?
I can tell you what last, last week, and I, I think it, I can't, whatever day it was, maybe Wednesday. Let me back up just a bit, what we're seeing at LT1 is, is not something unusual that we're seeing along the river, and, and we know we have a, a sediment problem coming down, uh, from the mountain, even 44. uh from the mountain even forty-four years later, and what it, what it does is it builds an area and it re- redirects the, the floor of the river. And it's, it's uh in certain places, it's starting to encroach along the banks and, and erode those away, and that's one of the issues out of LT one is we have a person's private property that's probably eroded probably a hundred feet of it, and it's getting within well, I'd say thirty to forty, forty feet of the county road. I think one more uh strong weather a bit next year may take out that road, so we're having some issues um with that, but back when the, when the mountain blew and, and Congress set the authority for uh the Army Corps of Engineers, it was on flood control. So what they're cons- what they concentrate on is, is flood control and, and basically around the levee, so they, they watch out at Lexington and there's, I think, two or three places where we have levees, and they just, they wash those and, and uh for flood control, and they use some metrics that they have, and things are fine. We need to expand that and get to the point where we can put a machine in that, that river and start um do some dredging and, and move that channel back where it needs to be and, and keep it off, off the banks. To do that is very, very, very difficult. Uh, when I was back in Washington DC, I talked to a fellow by Steve Kopecky, I think he, his name was. He's high up in Army Corps, and even if the county was flush with money, you could buy their own dredge and put it in there, they wouldn't allow us to to do it. So, uh, what that leads up to is last week, I met, it wasn't just me, uh, I met with our federal lobbyist, David Hodges. Uh, Susan Eugenis was there, uh, uh, Kelly was there, Savannah was there, and what I wanted to start talking to him about is what's the process to amend that order from expand it from just looking at flood control to actually to start looking at erosion control and those type of things. And so we've kind of started that process. Every two years it comes up, but, but David had some uh he's gonna reach out and start doing some preliminary work for us and see what we can do. I, I you know, that, it's not an easy process. I'm not gonna kid anybody that we can, we can turn that over in, in a day, but I think it's a process that needs to be started. And uh, will it happen while I'm in term? I don't, I can't even tell you that, but, but if you don't start it, you can never if you never start something, you can never find the finish date, so we need to start looking at that and, and looking a little different at that, that river and the sediment than just just solely focused on flood control in the, in the levee areas.
On uh something like this, uh, where I think this is probably a priority item in the county. I mean, of the thing, there is nothing that an individual can do. This really does require the government.
Right.
So, it, would we as a board go ahead and advocate if we could get the money? Just doing, you know, trying to get the Corps' permission doesn't, isn't it's a kind of your bureaucratic adherence that I think we should ignore? Any thoughts along those lines?
Well, I think, I think, and you mentioned it the other day, we're working on the state level too, and that's a little bit with the Department of Ecology has some funds available, and, and I don't know you know, how those pressure points work, but uh we're working both at the state level and, and the, the federal level. If we were to find some money at the state, then hopefully that would put some pressure to let us do something and, and uh help save some of that, because right, because right now, our best option on that road out, out to LT one is out by the Calis County Gun Range in Castle Rock. And that county road serves uh so home, homes there, and our best option right now is we're looking at a different way into that, because uh we don't know that we have the have the time, will we give them permission to shore that up before that, that road is gone?
Yeah, regardless, there isn't enough time before you suspect you lose the road.
Right.
Uh, did we want Susan to explain to us what her, what her plan is on the road?
If she's on and she wants to do that, she is. It's, it's a
It's an interesting approach.
I can uh, Castle Rock, if you're at the, the, I don't know the exit number, but the exit where the new space age is.
It's fifty-two?
Yeah, whatever that is. That's the road that accesses LT one or the, or the shooting range. Well, uh, it'll, it, you, you come in and right across from there is Paradise Cove. You've heard of Paradise Cove, the RV park. Well, Burma Road goes to the left, and then the road that accesses LT one goes to the right. Our option is to go up to the end of Burma and easement through and, and, and come down a, a different way and just probably let that section of the road go, but there's some homes that we have to give access to to get out, and we still need to have access to the gun range in LT one. And it's just in very, very preliminary uh estimates, uh, when Susan, I asked her to just kind of look at that and give us a rough estimate to get that all done, we're talking, starting right around a million and a half just to do that, so there's really no easy fix.
On something like that, let's say that plan is what we end up having to do. So the homeowner presumably had a driveway going to what's no longer going to exist. It's gonna be on them, or they're gonna have to do a new driveway.
Right.
Yeah, so it's, it's not, there, there is no happy solution for anybody here. It's gonna be expensive.
Yeah, it's, if you go out there and, and you look at it, number one, don't get too close to the bank, because it's all sand. But what's interesting is you'll see uh it's an eddy, so it's, the river comes down and it's kind of uh carved out this big reverse C-type thing. And you look at one landowner over there, and you look at the bottom, and there's, there's a rock shelf, and I, and I would I would almost certainly say that before nineteen eighty, that rock shelf was probably uh where the that contained the river on that side.
Yeah.
And now there's, I don't know, there's seventy, at least seventy feet of dredg- dredge spoils above that that's starting to eat away, and as we learned up in Rock Creek, no long, no it doesn't matter how long those dredge spoils sit, it had one big event in, in Rock Creek, and boom, they just, they just go away. So it, it's kind of precarious land out there. It's
So the, the Army Corps does dredge the Columbia from time to time, right?
They'll dredge the Columbia because it's a maritime highway, commercial traffic up and down it.
So all we have to do is get the homeowners around there to go out on these sandbars and kick sand, so it gets blown down the river.
If we can move the sand down to the Columbia, they'll dredge it.
Yeah. I'm just throwing out some ideas. You know, the thing about bureaucracy is that it will kill you if you're completely obedient to it.
I, I'll, I'll say this, and I say it just because we're on air, and I don't want people to think, uh, Commercial Doll is gonna blow things up, but, but if you look, look across from LT one, that's county property over there too, and you can see where the river ran on, on that side. Well, some well-placed dynamite and somebody pushing a button, we could reopen that, that channel over there, but I haven't talked I've tried to talk to these two retiring guys, see which one wants to push the buttons, but
Wait till I get my Venezuelan passport.
And once again, that's in jest. We're not blowing anything up, but
Yeah.
But it, the point is, it, it, it can be done. It, it's gonna ta- it takes some willingness.
Yeah, and uh
It's a, it's a, it's a, I tell people, that whole sediment issue in this river is bigger than um, than just the people living day-to-day kind of realize. It, it, it it affects a lot of, lot of things, and it's a bigger issue. You don't see it because you're not you're not coming down the road and hitting big potholes and stuff like that. You're not being uh physically impaired by it, but it, it's causing problems, it's gonna, gonna cause bigger problems in the future, and, and you can't ignore it. You have to do something with it.
There, there's some interesting philosophical issues here. So, for example, if I owned a five-acre parcel and somebody decided to bring in their excavator and start to excavate my property and all that, that, that's a theft, and, and the government presumably would do something about that. Well, how different is that from somebody? I mean, I know several landowners that have lost twenty to eighty feet of their property. Uh, you know, are we not under obligation to protect that or not? I don't know. Are, are they similar? I try to look at the big picture there. On the other hand, nature does what nature does, including blowing those Mount St. Helens. I think when we talk about government emergencies, there's, that's a game government plays in order to avoid some of the r- r- regulations, but a real emergency really does happen occasionally, like Mount St. Helens blowing, and there's no timestamp that says it's gonna be an emergency for only two years or three years. It's so much damage, it takes you hundred years to get back.
Yeah.
If you can get back.
And I'm, and I, and Army Corps is working on some uh s- sediment control up the, the Toodle uh with the dam up there and
Yeah.
different things, so they are working on it, but here's a little known thing. Their, their charge on this expires in two thousand thirty-five. When it was first granted, I didn't, I didn't under, I didn't know that until after meeting with David. It actually expires in two thousand thirty-five.
Uh, they're dealing with Mount St. Helens.
Yeah.
Yeah, which would mean eighty plus, that'd be twenty plu- fifty-five years?
Yeah. I don't think you're gonna be done dealing with it.
No, I don't, but that's because like everything else, we, we didn't in nineteen eighty, we didn't know exactly what should be expected, and to say we're gonna end it at fifty-five years when we haven't done our job in between is typical governmentese.
And, and, and I'll give them a little bit of slack because it's, it was an unknown. We didn't
Right.
Yeah. Who has a volcano go off in their, their, their backyard like that, and, and how do you? It, it was an unknown, and, and at the time, you know, you really had two options. You, you let Mother Nature do what Mother Nature does, and you work around it, or you try to control it, and of course, man being man says, we'll control it, and so we're still trying to do that forty-four years later.
Bailey, is Susan able to talk to us?
I don't know. She's on, I mean.
Uh, yeah, if you, I, I'm sort of interested in a, uh, I, you know, we get lots of emails. Oh, by the way, if any of you ever wish to speak, just walk up and we'll, we'll stop, but th- th- this is the kind of conversation that has to go on, and it's difficult for us to talk unless it's out in the open. We don't make the rules. Um, the, so I got an email about m- m- money, federal money available for grade crossing. And I wondered where we stood on that. You know that the city of Kelso is building a grade crossing. Help Kenan, is it U Street, Hazel Street? Hazel Street. And uh, that's uh, do, do you have a latest on the, on the cost estimate?
Okay.
Di- did you want to come up so that people can, can hear? Is the green, green light on?
From my understanding, it's about forty million, approaching forty-three million.
And you remember that started out at just slightly at twenty million.
Yeah, approximately. That was before I was on council, but yes.
Right, right. It was the cost increases because?
Couldn't tell you. Not my lane. I'm not an engineer or construction manager.
Yeah. That's a lot of money.
Yeah.
I mean, when you, when, when, when you think about that uh crossing, that's far less important than like when I five is bottled up, you can't get from uh uh Woodland or La Center up, up here. There are things we could do about it, but so I, I, I think the challenge we face is always, how do we get prioritization on, on items, because government doesn't do good prioritizations. It's always who's the most lib speaker as opposed to doing a cost analysis. Forty million here, forty million there. We might even be able to fix the Lewis and Clark Bridge, right?
Yeah, I don't think you can for forty million.
No, no, I know, but, but, but you multiply that times fifty states or however, you know, four thousand or counties or something like that.
That's also an issue that when I was back, I made sure we, we put a spotlight on because it's a long process and, and that bridge, uh, if you were, knock on wood, had something like Baltimore and a ship hit that, it would take that bridge down, and the economic impact uh to this area would be incredible. I mean, we saw when it was shut down, that it was cheaper for a company to rent a helicopter and fly their people over than it was to go, go around. So, that, that handles, uh, according to one study, second highest commercial traffic in the state of Washington
Yeah.
comes across that bridge.
Terms of tonnage.
Yeah, from the tonnage, so you, you can just understanding that, if that wasn't there, you can understand what it, what an issue that would be. And br- bridge replacements aren't easy, so uh that's another one that I think you need to and it has been worked on some in the past, but it really needs to stay focused and, and pushed too, because there needs to be a fix there at some point in time.
The, the Companion Bridge uh at Hood, uh, wherever is, then uh has been ongoing for ten years.
Susan's on there if you want to.
Yeah, so Susan, do thank you. Uh, do, do you have any comments about uh grade crossings? I, I, I saw an email advertising that more federal money, I think it was federal money, is being made available for grade crossing. Do we have a problem? Do we have plans? Anything of interest there?
So the county has minimal at-grade crossings left. Um, we have um one that is ours in Woodland, and then the Scott Avenue is a woodland crossing. We have that complicated crossing. If you get off the Todd Road exit and go uh towards the port here and Tautiff, there's that multi-lane crossing where it's a complicated one, and it would be because of the constraints there, it would be hard and expensive to fix.
Oh, I think I know the Todd Road one. There are multiple tracks, and there are very long trains go through there.
Yes.
Have you gotten feedback from the, from the, of the Port of Klammer that that's a problem?
I have not, um, and then the uh rest of the county's crossings are um generally minor uh side ramps, but there are multiple along um the BNSF rail north of the city of Kelso that are private crossings. The Horseshoe Bend, for example, that is a private crossing uh at grade, and I know there's been some issues with that particular uh crossing. But besides that, there, there is not any issues that I know of. I did see that there was uh money out there, but I did not perceive the county having a crossing that they wanted to pursue at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you want to print that for me? I'll go over, go ahead, Ron.
We finally got a comment.
Yeah.
We certainly aren't unique to have all of the rivers in uh, Central America, Mississippi for instance. They did somewhere under a clean out it periodically that the Mississippi flood over flood plain like it did five hundred years ago and just spread the silt out here. Again, Lexington and the whole areas are built on silt. You had a major, major rain event, you'd have all of that silt, including Lexington, everything, all leveled back out and dried it out beside wherever you're gonna dredge it out and with the color trigger back in there. Your discussion with the ecology coming up, it says, okay, what do you do is that you can't get permission to work in the river, but you will let the bank go ahead and erode and erode and erode and put all that silt back in there. And if you let that go for another fifty years and didn't do anything, you would have that in tremendous areas throughout Lexington and that house not all the way up down the river. So again, in the old days, we used to have et cetera, the great big cranes that had the drag buckets on them. Throw them out there in the river or whatever and drug the bucket in and pull stuff in. Okay, so again, then you also have your very high pressure hoses, I'll call it, whatever, et cetera. So if you take which is worse, to take a coat of an area like that in the river and stir up the silt, so it flows on now, or let the silt come in from fifty, a hundred, two hundred, five hundred feet of the bank into the river anyway. One advantage with the pressure, et cetera, you say, well, during flood times or high water times, ecology doesn't uh, shut everything down because they can't do much about nature and flooding. But if you stir up the silt at that time, it'll it'll flow because it's already flowing and dirty. So I I mean, you gotta talk and see what creativity you can get with the ecology and say, hey, what if we put some very high pressure hoses in?
The button.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. So if you had some high pressure hoses or in there and just loosen the silt in the main channel and let it go during a flood time, when you can't do anything else anyway. I don't know what what the solutions are, but we've got to do more than just let the the silt that you pumped out at eighty years or forty years ago, eventually under the worst case scenario, all flows back in, including all the houses and all the property that built on this great fantastic silt banks sitting up there.
That's a little
I we don't disagree. I I don't disagree with you.
Well, it's got to start with ecology and seeing what in the heck you can jab them with that is an acceptable uh, options.
As as you know, sometimes it's common sense gets laid to the side. Here here here's an example of where you just go, man, this just doesn't make any sense. They want to put a new vault toilet uh, bathrooms up at the gun range in one of the areas. One of the things they have to go through is they have to do an archaeological survey up there.
On silt.
Yeah. Well, this is all Mount St. Hel, unless Harry Truman's in there somewhere. There's there, it's just seventy feet of silt. But that you run into that kind of stuff. And I think that's what you're talking about. You're 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 going, it does make sense. We we can fix this. We just need the tools.
And I think that's where my admonition comes in. We no longer are a nation that is trying to solve problems. We're trying to check the boxes in bureaucracy. Because clearly what you'd step back is do what you just did, analyze what can I do and so forth, because I identify it as a problem.
Bureaucracy and lawfare is that no matter what, even with the best intentions, we try to do. If there's one person with money and with an attorney, they can file a restraining or a stop order and you don't have any any of the real leaders in our society anymore that just says to hell with it. We've got to do what's right.
Did you want to get me going on the legal system?
Well, I'm I'm just saying is that, uh, and of course, uh, they'll put us, the good citizens, in jail for violating something simple and all the other stuff goes on.
Well, there is, if there are enough of you, then uh, you'll you'll likely get get some action.
That's called almost getting to civil war, isn't it?
No, I I just
You can't get enough of us together in a crowd at one of these gatherings because we're peaceful, we're nice, we just put signs out. We don't get much attention with that other than a couple of pictures in the paper and news.
Other than the the
But if you go burning down things like that with the right, oh, uh, whatever, then it's all forgiven.
The the if I look at the Million Man March, I look at the Vietnam War protests, whether you're agreed with them or not, is irrelevant to the point that it had a tremendous impact. Most of those were you know, they're logistic issues when you put a million people in one place. But other than that, I would classify them as largely peaceful, but uh, intense. And it's kind of like, we we've we've had some issues here in the county where I think it's pretty clear how the people generally feel. And we 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 do a gathering at the Monticello Quad and maybe hundred and fifty people show up. That isn't gonna do it. If three thousand of us showed up there, that'll do it.
That's right. That's right. And we're we're trying to build toward elections right now, November. We can get choices. But you have to have people that have some knowledge of what's going on and what they really want this place to be for their kids and willing to step up.
Well, you also have to have uh some common ground, like for our nation, the constitution is supposedly the common ground. But that is so misused. I'll 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 give you a quick example. It really galls me when we talk about the president's legacy. The president is a custodian of our nation. His abilities are listed, his his capabilities are listed in the constitution. We ignore all that and we talk about the legacy of this president and that president as they reform the nation. That's our, that's us. That's we, the people abdicating or abandoning the constitution.
Right. And the people that we we at least elected and are, we hope defending what the we, the people are, but that's not what we're seeing.
The risk of boring everybody to tears, I was at a Washington State Association of Counties. Last time I said credit unions, my pass came in. I sit on their Legislative Steering Committee, LSC. And this past week, they came up with list of items that they all the counties would like to see. Uh, WASAC is what it's referred to, work with the legislature on it. And it started out with like, I think there's forty-two to start with, and it was weeded down to seven. And I can give kind of give you a brief rundown of those. The first two are really were driven by urban counties. You're talking about your big counties, your Kings, your Snohomish, your Pierce. New County Revenue and and that revolves around lifting the one percent tax on property taxes with a host of other other things.
It it can you flesh that one out? So the the intent is to
Get rid of the one percent cap.
Okay, and and WASAC says that's on their priority list now?
Yeah, that's uh, these first two are were really driven by the large counties, the urban counties, the Kings and the Snohomish. They're
You must be frustrated with WASAC.
Yeah, it's not something I would, well, you know what we did here? We didn't lift it at all. But they want that, the big counties really want that one percent in their mind hampers them. And they really want to be able to do more. So that's their funding for indigent defense. There's a new metric coming out that shows how many attorneys, uh, defense attorneys you need for based on cases. And it's gonna have a huge, it'll have an impact on our county. Uh, but it'll have a huge impact on the on the bigger ones. And so there's concerns about funding about that. Funding for rural county coroners. Uh, some counties, the prosecutor acts as the coroner. And it's uh, in this state of Washington, you're no longer prosecutor, will no longer be able to do that. So counties that have that will have to have their own coroner. So those counties are concerned about how they're gonna pay for that. It doesn't, we have a corner. It doesn't affect us. Here's one I I learned about and you all should be aware of this. It's requiring FSEC, E F S E C to comply with state and local development requirements and provide liability. FSEC is, this is what, how it was explained to me, and I didn't know about this until last week. FSEC is a committee that that responds to the governor. What they do does not have to be, it doesn't have to be within GMA standards. If you're a GMA county, it doesn't have to meet environmental law, doesn't have to do anything. If they want to do it and the governor tells them it's okay to do it, they can do it. Here's an example.
So it's a committee?
It's a committee.
Appointed by the governor?
I can't swear it's appointed by a government, but they, the governor is Right.
Okay.
Here's an example that Spokane County explained to me. They have uh, FSEC has approved a big wind farm over there on I don't know how many acres it is. It didn't have to come through the county for review. The neighbors around obviously are are around the proposed wind farm or having fits. It doesn't have to meet any of the county guidelines, doesn't have to meet anything. They've decided and the government's approved that that wind farm can go in there, so it's gonna go in there. And if damages happen from that down the road, the county's on the hook for those damages. So FSEC, E F S E C. It's uh, I very much was in favor of trying to control some of this. In fact, it shouldn't even be there.
Did did FSEC come through the legislature?
I didn't ask that. But they're they're given free rein. The way it was explained to me, it sounds like if your governor wants to do it, he has FSEC do it. They don't have to comply with any of the rules and off they go.
I think they have the wrong acronym. It should be T Y R A N N Y.
It's, it was uh, very scary. I don't know of any stuff happening in our county. It mostly is affecting eastern Washington because they have the space and the the wind and stuff for the wind farms and the solar farms and all that other stuff, but it it's got those counties very, very nervous. Uh, creating accountability for behavioral health continuum. I think there's been some rule changes there, but it's never been put into contract and it never sent those contracts out for reprocurement. So there, uh, the ask is to tighten that up and make sure whoever is doing these services are operating under the new rules and it's contracted, contractually liable. Addressing county housing access and affordability. This one I was I was good with. A lot of the affordable housing ones are, we're gonna raise fees over here to somehow make it more affordable to buy over here. I don't know how that works. But but that is most, this one was really, it was actually drafted by WASAC and and it really is is trying to give rural areas uh, more easier access to doing uh affordable dwelling units or other units and and different things and try to ease some of the burden. So I I was I was good with this one. The last one, uh, funding for the preservation and maintenance of the county transportation system, road taxes. They're very concerned and I really, I didn't vote for this one because and I'm nothing against our 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 county, and I think they do well with the road funds that we have. But they're very concerned if the the ballot measure and the carbon tax goes away, how how are they gonna re redo that? But you know, here's the way I look at it. We pay we're in the top five, if not the top two or three in road taxes in the in the entire United States. I don't think we have a they call it revenues, but tax receipts issues for improving our roads. I think we have a spending priority issue. So I'm I'm not in favor. They're looking for any ways to raise road taxes. It could be a per mile charge. Just all kinds of stuff. And and this one didn't even make my my top thirty, but it got, a lot of counties are worried about it, so.
You all set for a bunch of questions?
If you have them. If I can, I'll try and answer.
Yeah, i- if folks would like to interrupt us, I'm sure that's okay. So is WASAC a good thing? How do we use it? How beneficial is it to Kala's County? And is that a fair question?
Well, they they act on the behalf of of counties. They speak for counties. The 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 problem is that I affordable housing isn't an issue of where we need to tax here and 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 then we can make it more affordable. Affordable housing is an issue. You know, I've spoke to this before and I'm not the only county that thinks this way. Uh, affordable housing is a is a result of overregulation by the system that has added costs. And but to get them to fight that kind of thing is very, very difficult. That's that's a battle we don't think we can win. So then they look at other things. Oh, I and I don't try and say this kind because I I like the people up there and I think they they mean well. But they're really looking for low hanging fruit that they can actually do something on so they can say they've done something. I would be one that would say, no, let's get rid of the building committee. Let's 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 do something big that actually makes a a difference. Like they're going, how can we control FSEC? I'm going, how do we get rid of these people?
So i- i- trying to elaborate on that because are are we obligated to participate with WASAC?
No.
So in, uh, I don't recall how much we pay to WASAC. There's a tithing of some kind.
Uh, it's based on our our size and I don't recall either, aren't.
Yeah.
We we could the county could have their own lobbyists and fight their own stuff up there. And some of the bigger counties do have their own lobbyists and and
Well, here's what I'm thinking along those lines. Uh, the big urban counties, Kings, Snohomish, Pierce, they've, they already have the legislature to lump us with them as counties does has never made any sense to me. We get the kind of stuff you just talked about here. It would make much more sense for the smallest twenty-eight counties or some number like that to get together and form their own WASAC equivalent. And so I I would encourage thinking more along those lines, birds of a feather kind of thing. That would mean it would be more expensive on us. But as mentioned, nothing's gonna change unless people get behind it in some way. So that's one possibility. So in the end, in in your, I I I know we haven't done the research to justify this. My gut feeling is that WASAC is not beneficial to us. What's your feeling?
I uh, yeah, I I'm kind of along those lines. And and once again, I don't know how much we we pay them. Uh, they will you know, if we have a specific problem, they will help us act on on that thing. And I don't know what that's that that's worth. I I think let me put it this way. I think our relationship with our federal lobbyists is much more beneficial. Because if I have a, if we have a real situation in Olympia and we want to address it, I have two representatives and a senator I can call. Or I can drive forty-five minutes up the freeway and walk into an office and talk to them about it. I can't do that in Washington DC. So they, our federal people in my mind actually have more value than than what we have up here.
Yeah. Lots, lots of questions during your discussion of FSECs, FSEC. You mentioned liability a few times and it's very classic. The government really always throws the mandates on you and the liability on you. And that is a recipe for extremely obnoxious behavior in terms of of the legislature.
Right.
So uh I just want people to be aware that how one sided the legislature behaves, they're an island unto their own. OPD mandates is another example, the the indigent defense stuff is lawyers for lawyers. And we end up paying paying the tab. Indigent defense is already downstream of a bunch of rules that don't make a lot of sense. Why do you need licenses for cutting hair? Why do you need this or that?
Yeah.
It just goes on and on. At the risk of bothering some people, our drug laws are so arcane that we're that we're going in seesaws. There's a federal law against marijuana. That at least we're sensible here, if we have a marijuana law and we can just thumb our nose at the federal law, because there is no standing for the federal law, there's no standing for an FDA or any of those things. Embedded in all that is the assumption by the people, and I'll always go back to the people. Thinking the government is gonna do something beneficial for them and it typically doesn't, is very rare. There are some things that it should be involved with national defense. That gets abused, but I don't think Calis County should be involved in the Ukraine. And uh and the and the border, but if you think about it, the federal government has abdicated responsibility and who pays the price again? We do. And uh anyhow, I I could go on, but I I I really do appreciate that uh explanation of what happened at the LSC.
Yeah, uh Amanda Kinney is a commissioner in Yakima. Now, try to explain how she explained it, I won't be perfect, but if
Amanda who?
Amanda Kinney.
Oh, yeah.
She she's a
She's a pistol.
Yeah, she's commissioner over in Yakima and she was talking about EFSEC. And he said if they're looking at a piece of property in Yakima and if they do uh what wind farm or so or whatever it is they put in there, if it creates some environmental damage and ecology come out and says, you know, this is creating this. Who's on the hook? Yakima County.
Yeah, I I don't know if it's true, but the the Alene Casino, I think, was built or under construction before it got any permitting at all, they just said, we're gonna do it.
So comment, the word affordable housing keeps getting used and it's totally out of context. Because it's a government word, it seems to get get money one way or another. And it's like you said, the the codes and the requirements on them have driven the price completely out of kilter. All if you go to any one of them and go look at the electrical panel that's in new construction. We used to be able to put in breakers because for safety, for breaking. Now we've got the whole panel filled full of GFI units that what you start out in just a simple little house with for having uh used to be thirty six spaces or forty spaces. Now you gotta practically have eighty spaces because every GFI unit takes extra. And then your dry new code, I was just talking about electrician, new code is now requiring GFIs on dryers and a whole bunch of things. Okay, so what is it? A hundred dollars just for the GFI unit to put in the breaker panel? What?
Then they're fragile.
And they're fragile, right, and any person that's really concerned that isn't there, they don't want a GFI unit on their refrigerator or freezer, because when the thing trips out due to uh some short somewhere along the way, you've now killed all the food that was that's in your refrigerator. So the the uh good doers out there, do-gooders out there are creating more harm. Again, you talk about hazardous materials and ecology. If they would do a hazardous material study on all of these solar panels and the potential later on when the panel is no longer working, has to be disposed, that's all hazardous materials. Our windmills are hazardous materials, et cetera. So they look at all the one side, but not at the second side of what they are, what causing us in society. And it's all us paying the bills, because we have administrators that are able to issue these, not even connected to the voters.
Yeah.
Regulations and and of course, we have uh other interested parties that have uh it it's like most of this, follow the dollars and you see who's uh where it's going.
Yeah, and and I haven't been shy about saying it and 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 I still believe it. We we can't, we can make affordable housing much more affordable, but it it's not a, it's a get rid of regulation, i- it's not, we need bills to fix these things over here, what we need is a lot of bills wiped out. Let's be honest, you can build and you can probably go back farther in this. Take a a home, take building codes from the nineties, you'll have a safe home. It it's gonna be efficient, it's not not gonna spark fires and do all that. When's the last time you see seen uh faulty wiring or something on a new home cause a fire? It's usually human error that causes that kind of stuff. So it's it's regulation is the issue and we don't chase, we don't chase solution. We we chase political motives. We got a whole green industry that's based off of of mandates and subsidies. They wouldn't exist, except for somebody said that has to be there and oh, yeah, we'll we'll give you taxpayer money to make sure it works. If it had to live by raw economic value like most businesses do, we wouldn't even be dealing with that stuff, it'd just be nonsense. Until it became efficient enough that people would invest in it.
Right, right, and then and again, if we have the fortitude when our agencies come in, I'll I'll just pick on, it's not particular, the Hou- Housing Authority. Again, when it's costing four hundred and fifty or thou- uh thousand dollars to build an affordable unit. We have to ask them, how much is the unit itself costing? The this, the land that was donated for the one out there and building versus all the administration and the grant writers and all of the process in gathering the money. What's the the true cost if uh we were to get some carpenters and electricians and people together to build the units?
Yeah.
I might offer that some of the true cost is never reflected, because it is part of the game. You you know how a tariff operates?
A what?
How would tariff operate? So uh uh we we have a Panama hat industry by 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 a contrived analogy. Manufacturing Panama hats in the United States. But because our cost basis and all that is sufficiently high, that factory cannot compete with real Panama hats. So we make sure that we tariff the Panama hats to protect the industry inside. We do that enough and I'm gonna be a guy, an entrepreneur in the United States and I'm gonna think, oh, I can beat the I I can be more efficient, so now I've got another company building, building the Panama hats, I've institutionalized a uh a a bad decision. In other words, uh the reason we can do pretty well is because we have specialized in the world and you do what you do well and I do what I do well and then we'll we'll do the do the barter. Why I bring this up is because in the affordable housing and we 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 use that not 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 trying to say that there is such a concept, but that's the handle everybody uses. And so it's just just a name to uh to grab that. The way that works now, not only are the costs, as has been discussed, based on a kind of stupid requirement. In addition, the government then says, well, because the housing's too expensive, we will subsidize it. Now we grow another industry. The uh the the property managers and when there's enough dollars in there, there are games played. And I know there were games played here, we put out something like total of twelve million over two or three years of subsidy subsidies for housing. The tenant has to be one of those people successfully playing a game with the landlord and so forth. And uh I I know I haven't drawn it well, but it's pretty clear to me. This is so decadent and so ridiculous, so anti-American that it just drives me nuts.
Yeah, it it you put it in, you know, I I brought out a stat a while ago. I think the National Builders Association does a survey, I think every five years, I'm trying to recollect on what costs associated, how can they positively identify as as regulation costs? And over the last two surveys, they've been right around twenty five percent of the cost of a home is they can attribute and they can they can mark out and say it's due to regulation. So put that in perspective, four hundred thousand dollar home, that's a hundred thousand dollars. That is due to excess regulation, that's a that's a big chunk.
And then you And then you have the indirect costs that don't ever get into it. For instance, uh the the floor framing on a house that was being done for me. Okay, they couldn't put the uh sheathing on the floor joists because the inspector would have to get down into the crawl space, a four foot crawl space and look up at the joists after the sheathing was on, so he said, I don't do that. And so the contractor had to hold off putting the floor sheathing on till the inspector could come out and spend five minutes looking at the floor joists and approve those and then drive off again. You know, we don't have the managers in place with the gonads to say, if you aren't willing to step down underneath and look up and help the people move ahead, then who are you really working for? You know, it it gets back to all of these indirect things that, again, all of these everywhere there's a regulation, the contractors and the people and I I look at, I used to be able to look at the codes and understand them. I don't know very many people that that can now look at their codes, same way with the law part of it, et cetera. And the contractors and spending their time and inspector coming out and tell them, oh, how it, they didn't quite get right or whatever. It's so complicated that that in itself is a very expensive indirect cost.
Yeah, agreed, we we're in this this deal where we think more rules is gonna fix the existing rules. And what we need is to start paring off the the nonsense existing rules.
Trying to scare up some commentary from a young person.
You've done pretty well, we we've gone an extra forty five that had to listen to ours, our
Yeah, you're right.
Anyway, with nothing else, uh we always appreciate your participation and we will adjourn.
Thank you.